I'm not sure.
We've got a little.
I should do it.
Mr. Reynolds.
Just one year ago.
I was thinking about everything I would say.
Anytime.
As soon as Gary gets ready.
Oh, my daughter's got it too.
Don't worry.
This is Harry's.
Yeah.
They didn't appreciate it.
Or.
Right. No one else does it. It's up to you. Whatever. And doing Kevin. Discuss on it just when I hear something.
Stick your light.
Yes.
Yeah. They are.
So.
I know.
All right. We will be scratching the service marine review. And we'll be stretching. Matt look. Okay. Yes.
Living fence one and service marine.
The one for.
Oh.
That's one.
Another note. Janine Silverdale will be joining us via Zoom a few minutes later.
Okay.
He's in another Zoom meeting also. If you'll please step up and sign on, we'd appreciate it. Okay. So, block. We'll begin. We do have a forum. We've got. Five members. We're only five officers. You don't want to listen to that. Okay, the meeting was advertised in the meantime and posted on village website. Obviously, quite a few people saw. So we're going to get going here. First thing is first. We have the limits from June 6th and June 22nd to review and approve. Let's start with the June 6th one, please. We've had a chance to look those over. Have you got any? Corrections or additions? We need to look at smaller. Not hearing anything. So yeah, I have a motion to approve the June 6th minutes.
I'm moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Same time? Oh, there's Janine now. What do you mean? Okay, the June 22nd. Minutes, if you take a second look at those. That was our meeting. We were a little short, but it was our fastest meeting ever. Any suggestions or changes? Or rates?
I'm going to set the medals.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? During now, it is been approved. As I suggested, unfortunately, Mr. Maxim was not able to attend today. He asked that we postpone his application to the next meeting. Who was not able to attend? John Maxim. Service Marine. So, Darrell? Darrell present? There you are. Darrell, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, just for our sake, would you review your application again? I know this is a final site plan. Could you review your project with us? Refresh your memory?
Yes, I can barely hear you for some reason. I'm trying to figure out how to.
We'll try. I am negative. But. Is that better?
So yeah, we're just trying to build a garage behind our property at 8434 Bay Street. I don't have all the information in front of me. I'm sorry, I just got on my phone, but we've, I think we've already got the approval for the setbacks and everything and.
Yes.
I'm not sure really what else you need to know.
Zoning is approved, the setbacks and all that. We have your stamp plans. Okay, anybody have a question or comment for Darrell?
I have no questions.
All right.
No, this was a while ago.
Yeah.
And zoning approved it per the plans.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if nobody has any concerns, then we have a motion.
A motion to approve.
Okay.
So we're approving though a revised application from his original submission.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Changes that we had suggested in the building board.
Can I change that in the advertisement so it reflects the correct sizes?
Thank you, Ken.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? During that opposition, it's approved. Congratulations Darrell. Say hi to your parents, homie.
Yeah, thank you very much. You have a great evening.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Hicklock. For a split rail fence. Down here. If you'll step up to the podium and present your project.
Yes, it is.
Just tell us.
We're just going to reestablish the property line and. We, we run the real end and our neighbor to the other side also has an Airbnb. And we've got people that are wanting to reach our property back and forth. Trying to be intrusive, we're just trying to say, yeah, here's the where everyone knows. I say, well, I don't want to get into, but we just, that's what we're looking to do. We're not trying to put up a stockade fence or something as to block anyone's view. And we were looking to maybe mirror what the town did at the park by leaving the two kickers on the end and then. You know, just extending the rails off. So. Nothing really.
Okay, stop by. Unfortunately, nobody has a door, so I walked around. I noticed it looked like you had three sections, two rail fencing. You got six rails and.
Oh, yeah, I don't have all the material laid out there. What I did is when I first did it, I didn't ever, I didn't know that I had to go through the formality of doing all this. And so I did the state out night. I have the surveyor coming as well. So I bumped him back till tomorrow, but what that does is that gives you. It gives you a general sense of what, what it's going to look like, what you look at and see it set down across the driveway there. The, the pin that's in the, that's in the driveway with the cone next to it is actually a hard dimension from the foundation of our property. That's where, that's where the line is. We're talking, it's like five and a half feet that we're, we're trying to reestablish.
So it's two sections, three foot section or?
Well, I'm going to go the whatever, however many it takes, I would say four, maybe five to come all the way back. And then I'd like to, I think I showed on the plan, I'm going to put a couple of sections in the backyard. Not to do the whole thing to break the view, but more so just to like put up two sections and say, seeing I'm having that survey, that's where the line is.
All right, because your application says two sections. So you're talking multiple sections now.
Okay, yeah, it wasn't where it said two sections.
Want to amend your application to reflect?
Do I have to call it how many sections?
Well.
I just want to do the front yard and two sections in the back. That's why it says on my application, two sections in the back, which is in the back of, I think, that's what I remember right away.
Here in the description, it says adding two sections of split rail fence per block drawing four foot high to mark boundary wanted to match down property.
But it's drawing shows two sections backyard shows four sections.
And when, when I read that, I thought it was two sections. So there's going to be a section of the front comprised of several segments.
Right.
Okay, and another section in the back comprised of several sections, segments.
I read.
Yeah. It made sense to me because the picture showed more.
Would you guys, can you guys show Todd the site plan that you guys have and just make sure you're on the same page with the site plan?
This is what they're trying to do. So right here, it's showing the two sections.
Yes.
About where they read it, it says adding two sections.
Okay, but this, this is more record to what we're doing. Yep. And if you, if you're going to do a count, I might just add that on the front, there may be another. Section of split rail or two to get, I don't, I never measured it because I didn't realize I was going to have to have that information. But it's pretty close where it is right now. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for?
No, I kind of figured that's the way it was going to go.
I know, because when I went to stop by, no one was home either, so I just kind of walked around the area.
You didn't come late enough.
Okay. So we're talking multiple links, but two seconds. In two areas.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Mr. Kelly, you have any questions?
No, no.
Mr. McKee?
Uh, no.
We don't?
No, I.
Janine, any questions?
No, I'm good.
You have it?
No, I'm good.
All right, then we have a fruit.
You need to hot center.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I move that we approved the application as indicated on the diagram submitted with the application.
Seven.
All right, we have a motion to approve as shown on the diagram. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There is no opposition. It's approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, number four. Matt La is unfortunately unable to attend due to emergency, so he's asked to be postponed also. That brings us to. First one. If you present your project.
Yes, so some of you know that we've been working on our house since 2018 to make it. Handy, that friendly and ease of life for us and our 32 year old disabled son. Five weeks ago, we were able to finally finish after waiting a couple of years for, because of COVID, to do the back patio structure. We are putting up a decorative privacy wall. That, that continues on from the carport back and it runs the length of, or the width of the patio. For, for, just for a little privacy, it is decorative. The, there's three panels, the two panels on either side are old garage doors that we found at the Source Point brush pile that my husband brought home. And the middle section will be all stained glass windows. Two of the windows are out of a church that are 150 years old and the other windows are from the apartment across the street, which are probably over 100 years old. We. Hopefully you all see what we're working on. We're very aware of. The beauty of it for our neighbors, so we have, have made sure there's a living flower wall on, on there and we just put a brand new garden.
I do good, but met you. Had to compliment you on that new patio. Fantastic patio. All right, any questions from the board?
I was. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please, Janine.
Um, the, the back piece that is currently up, that's eight feet.
Yes.
Was there a permit given for this construction of that?
No, when we were first doing it, we spoke with Kevin and.
Salut tout le monde.
Our station was about a privacy wall with stained glass and panels. And he said, as long as it's not a fence, go ahead and do it. When he was over at our neighbors last week, he noticed that it wasn't exactly what he pictured in his mind and said we have to come. And get a permit and come before the board.
And I can attest to that, what I was thinking was it was going to be kind of just stained glass, like a more of an art piece. And, and not that it's not artistic, but this is, to me, it meets the definition of offense.
So yeah, that, that was my question, because it, to me, it needs the definition of offense.
Yeah, as it is today, so it was my error at the beginning.
Hi, everyone.
It was.
Okay, thank you. And so this, you're asking, you know, for a permit that something's already up and then you want to add additional sections, is that correct?
The, the three sections are already up, they're just not filled in.
Right, but you have not gotten a permit for any of that.
No.
Okay, so that was my question, thank you.
Does this have to go to zoning since this?
Yes.
Okay.
When I was at the property, we were talking to, I forgot to ask the question. You mentioned being respectful to the neighbors. Do you have their agreement? Have, have they seen your plans and are, are they, are they comfortable with what your proposal?
Well, the neighbors won't say hi to us. So we had.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I did, I did speak with the neighbors and they are very unhappy that it's went up without a permit. So they are not happy with the application.
Well, it seems that there was a.
Dislocation.
Yeah, there was no fault there.
Right.
So, okay.
So we're really voting on.
Well, we recommended to zoning for their approval.
Does it need to be eight feet?
The, the top section, it doesn't go all the way up eight feet. I mean, the, the top bar is, but there is a nine inch gap. Each section has a gap in between it. There's a big section at the top, there's a big section at the bottom, so it's not like it's a solid eight foot by eight foot section.
It still looks like a solid by solid eight foot section.
I think so.
So.
First name.
Julia.
Interrupting.
Who's that? They keep talking.
And maybe, I got it set, Bruce. Janine, just keep your mic unmuted if you can. No, 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 I'm going to ask you to mute. I just have it set, so here, I'll ask you to mute. There, it should be fixed.
Okay. My concern is it really looks like a solid eight foot fence. It's, so my question is, does it need to be eight, eight foot? I mean, can it be four foot? Can it be five foot? Can it be six foot? It's a, it's a pretty big fence.
Yeah.
Maybe. Why you need to try to see things?
Why we built it? Our, our son is 32 years old. He is severely disabled. There's not a place in our lives that we can go out without people staring at us, asking questions. This is something that this area we built for him and us to enjoy outdoors together. It's not safe for him to walk through the grass. This is a place where if he's a little anxious or a lot anxious, we don't have to worry about if anybody's looking at him. I don't have to shield him. He can just be who he is and as a mom, I can just relax with him. And I was very aware as I was designing this, what my neighbors would think, and I've done everything I could to make it beautiful for them. I know for years that they have had problems with the fence that Caitlin Marine owns and I have been so sympathetic to them. Up until this year, we were really good friends, we don't know what happened. We just, I'm still building it with showing my heart for my son and showing my heart for them to make it beautiful for both sides. It is pretty. I was out there today.
Okay. Mr. McKee, any questions or concerns?
No.
Darrell?
No. No, I have no problem, sir.
No.
Janine, any more questions or concerns?
Or muted, Janine?
One more time.
I, I'm. Um, I don't have any more questions.
All right.
This one's open.
Okay. Oh. What we need is a motion, one way or the other, to recommend or to not recommend this to the zoning.
I motion to approve the recommend to zoning is submitted to zoning, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
All right. Okay, this is a. Motion to recommend to zoning that they approve the proposal. Okay, this is a motion to recommend to zoning that they approve the proposal. We don't have that time. Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The majority moving aye and motion is passed, it will go to the zoning board. Kevin, directly if I'm wrong, the zoning case, Monday, correct?
This upcoming Monday, a week from today, yep.
You'll need to, one more time.
Thank you.
Okay. Now. Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett, you'll step up and present your proposal. Captain, you go, Johnny.
Mm-hmm.
I'm Guy Barra, this is my wife, Kathy, your property is 8510 Brooklyn Boulevard. We're here tonight to get a permit to install a fence along the east side of our property. It's about 102 feet or so. It's a standard aluminum fence, black paint, and very dry. Before I came here tonight, I spent dozens of hours preparing information for the meeting having to do with definitions of right of way, having to do with our history of ownership, having to do with my investigation within four different governmental agencies to find out who has control over this right of way and who might give you permission to make any adjustments to it. But I've changed my whole approach. All I'm doing tonight is asking permission to build a fence along my property line that does not infringe in any way on the right of way. If the problem with the right of way eventually gets this resolved, I may come back to the board to expand that, the length of that right of way. But as of today, all I'm asking for is a fence on the print of my property. This is an application similar to any fence application that you folks approve virtually every one of your meetings. So I'd like you to focus tonight on the fence application. Ignore any relationship to the right of way because I'm not going to in any way infringe upon the right of way at this point.
Do you have a new drawing?
No, it shouldn't be the same one.
So is, we ask questions?
Yeah.
So where the rope one is, is that where you're going to do is just come out and follow the rope?
Right.
So you're not going to go to the water?
No, no, we're going to follow the same location of the current fence. We'll replace that with a metal fence rather than a post and rope fence.
Right.
It's going to follow the same lines basically from north to south that are currently there. We'll add a new section going from west to east up to the point of the right of way, but not infringing on it.
But it will block off directly.
It will.
It will.
Right.
The easement, yes, yes, because that is on our property line.
Yeah.
And it will block it off and.
The easement runs north and south.
Yeah.
The fence I'm going to put in is running north and south as well as east and west. But as we put the east and west section of it, it's only going to run up to the point of the right of way, not into the right of way. So you can virtually ignore any reference that I've made.
So it's not blocking the right of way.
Yeah.
No, it is not blocking the right of way. It is not infringing on the right of way even one inch. I plan to hire a surveyor so they can properly identify our property line. So we put the fence where it belongs, just like any other fence that you folks approve every week.
So it's going to go to the tree like where you pointed out?
Basically to the tree.
Where that first stake is.
Where the metal post is where the right of way begins. It's going to go up to that post, but no, excuse me, no further south. Go south of there is where the right of way exists.
But you won't be able to walk through our property.
Right. As we put this fence along our property line, it's going to block people from using the current path that they have created over the last few years because of the right of way is now not accessible.
It goes in the water.
The right of way goes into the water and everybody now does that check.
It does. It goes into the water.
It does.
It does. And if people will come out, we would be very happy to show them that it goes into the water and there's plenty of mass.
We don't need to do that because the village is already down there. The village has put up rock along that eastern line to prevent further erosion. So the right of way cannot be traversed because there's hundreds of tons of rocks on the other side of the river.
And because people didn't want to walk on the rocks, they made their own path.
Right.
And we never had a problem with it till.
Right.
Yes.
So, so the fire pits technically.
That's right on the right of way, yeah. That's on the right of way. But working with the village a couple of years ago, they said they would put the signs up, which they did, and it would be closed dust till dawn. Well, it's not closed dust till dawn. It is not just a walking path, it's a motorcycle path, it's a bicycle path, it's a golf cart path. So we agreed to work with everybody and everyone should take advantage of it, so.
Can I just read a couple of things from my notes here? Just to do with why we really want this. Since the time of our purchase, the use of the path by the public has created entombable situation to live with. Each year, more and more seasonal renters and tourists use the path as their way from the county park and bed. On any given weekend during the high season, several hundred people pass in front of our home along the right of way all hours of the day and night. They're often loud, vulgar, intrusive, looking in our windows, leaving trash along the way, riding bicycles or scooters. We've had strangers sit on our lawn chairs at 2:00 AM in the morning, smoking pot and carrying out a conversation. Personal property has been stolen off of our land. We are, we often feel unsafe and threatened. This application was submitted on June 20th, all over three weeks ago. Since that date, since June 20th, there have been three incidents I'd like to relate to your group. First one took place on a blow up day. When it was basically over, people were walking from the beach to the town. One group of very intoxicated young ladies was walking through our property. One of them, in front of our steps to our patio, stuck her fingers down her throat in an attempt to throw up because she was so sick, right on our steps. Can you tell me about the other one? Just with the wall.
It was seven o'clock in the morning. I was out having my cup of coffee. It was a beautiful morning, all you could hear were the ducks. So I was just enjoying the beautiful view and then all of a sudden I hear, F you, F. You should just tell him that, F you. This woman's walking by on her cell phone. And I said, excuse me, please. She goes, if you don't like it, go in your house. And that's when I went to my husband and I said, done, we're done, we're so done. Now, if it was just the locals, I have no problem. And years ago, it was just the locals and it was absolutely beautiful. And I met so many wonderful people. Now we're tourists, we country, country, listen to me.
And then the third incident actually happened yesterday.
Yeah.
Man and woman were walking their dogs through the property. And my grandson, who was there for him, saved his wife. There's the guy right there, the guy in the phone zoom.
No, he didn't say that.
Clarify.
He said, there's a bastard.
Okay.
Playing some, there's the bastard.
So they walked off and they were coming back and my grandson says, there's the man who said this. So I wanted to confront him. He went into a rage. He started saying things that I would never say to anybody about me, saying that this is their right to walk through this property. He almost cussed at me, folks, he had a bag of dog traps in his hand. He lifted a dog bag to hit me, to swing it at me when his wife finally says, whatever your name is, calm down, just calm down and sleep. What are the three things that have happened in the last several weeks to give you an idea of how bad it is living there?
He was using F word, like it was, and I got, and I had fourteen age kids out there at the time playing football.
So getting back to what I said originally, I have no reason to question the right of way at this time. My request is to build a fence on my property line that does not infringe in the right of way. Someday, when the right of way issue is resolved, we may come back here again and say we want to extend the fence a certain number of feet more than we have now.
That's a whole lot of comments going, I thought you were making public comments back here. What's the issue?
Yeah, I want the board to focus on my request.
Thank you. Okay, board members.
I was there. Was that the site? Talked to Guy, can't be for a while. I see the traffic that goes up and down. I see why it's so a necessity, but I see their point also, you know, just living around and seeing how rude people are and how they act. So I get it. But the legality of it, I'm not 100%.
There's no legal issues here other than wanting to fence on our property.
Right, I understand. That's not for us to determine, right?
Why can't you become it for the last two people who came here asking for a fence?
Because they didn't have a right of way involved, right?
Right away, that.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know if it's now much, but I think we're still waiting to hear from the village attorney on. We aren't. So I think there's some issues that haven't been determined.
Let me read the letter that our son, I believe, that sent everybody a copy. Bruce, that's me. As you know, I have newer village board meeting tonight, will not be participating in the planning board meeting. I am the opinion the planning board is in need of more information before we can approve or just approve the requested fence theory. First, it is important to note that deed record in number 181 of deeds, page 419, only conveyed to the United States right of way, but not obey the fee interest in the property. We need to run a title from 1899 into the railroad to the present, see who, if anyone owns the property. Second, at this point, based on information at hand, I do not believe you are recording as the authority to grant or to launch to permission or loss permission to block off the right of way. While the US can certainly forego some of its rights and, and to the right of way pertaining to it, I do not see where government has the authority to usurp the express grant in the force of deed wherein the railroad also granted the right of way and for the use of convenience, convenience of a public generally in going to and from said pure, either on foot or with teams. The way the deed is where, that you not believe sovereign has the authority to diminish the right of way to the public. I believe that needs to be read just with legal counsel with the US government with a full understanding of what is actually granted in the deed according to 181 slash 49. And as soon as I have an updated title information, I'll share it with all concerned. I did ask Art how much time he thought we needed. He said two to three weeks, so.
May I speak?
Well.
We have the answers to those questions.
May I speak?
We have the answers to the questions.
May I speak?
Well, I, I think for my purpose, I'd like to hear what council has to say.
But council is speaking specifically about the right of way. My request has nothing to do with the right of way. That's an issue to be resolved in the future.
His, his problem is he's not sure what that property line looks.
We only paid a survey three times since we own the property.
I'm just saying.
Well, to the fact that he doesn't know, it doesn't mean that it doesn't exist.
We, we have a letter from the Army Corps of Engineers.
I know that you have the letter and what he's saying is, yes, they seated that, but in that letter, things one of four provided, however, section one, any consent to each other obtain such permission is maybe required on account of any other.
Right.
They're only seating there and that's only for a 25 year period. Mr. Williams states in this letter, we need to run the title from 1899, from 1899 into the railroad to the present, to see who owns the property.
Granted, I agree.
So I would prefer to cross my D's, dot my I's.
That's a cop out. I'm sorry.
It may be a cop out to you, but I think to
If I.
Majority of people, it's doing due diligence that we want to.
And you should do due diligence on the right of way. I'm coming in here asking for a fence on my property. It has nothing to do with the right of way. If this whole dilemma didn't take place, you would have granted that approval within five minutes of my presentation. And nobody can deny that. But because Mr. Williams is trying to hit his other motors, trying to delay the approval of my fence, my fence on my property line, not within the right of way. And the right of way issue is still ongoing and I will accept if every decision comes, comes up.
The people are walking on the.
All right. All right. The board. My personal feelings is we postpone this and give the village attorney time. He says two to three weeks, so I would give it. As you want.
I'm hoping we table the discussion until we provide, until we're provided additional information to the satisfaction of our village attorney about the whereabouts of the property lines.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to table.
We get a guarantee that'll only take two, three weeks?
Mr. Williams has a tendency to delay this.
Until, in two, three weeks, we'll revisit and go from there. Any, so we got the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Our next one, Maxine Appleby. Do you have a real approval permit that we've given on November 16th of 2020? Maxine, would you like to speak to us?
Oh, it's the same old Bruce. It's just that I couldn't get anybody. And finally, out of the blue, I kind of gave up on the whole thing and then last week Corky.
I can't.
What?
Okay, sorry, girls, that should be your.
What just happened?
Just get one second here.
People are leaving, Maxine, you can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to continue?
Okay, would you like to try it again, Maxine?
Oh, sure. So it's the same old. It's just that I kind of gave up on it because I couldn't get anybody to do the work. So out of the blue, about 10 days ago, Corky got ahold of me and said that he would do the, the piling. So I'm like, oh boy, what do I do? So I called Kevin and he said, well, we got to go for an extension. And so nothing's really changed. Well, there is something that's changed. It turns out that with the easement in the backyard with the village, I can't go behind the tree. I have to go in front of it. So it's not on my property line. It's actually almost two and a half feet off my property line. But there's some, you know, there's the 30. But there's some, you know, there's the thirty six inch pipe there. We definitely don't wanna interfere with that since my backyard and basement doesn't flood anymore. And then, otherwise, I think everything else is exactly the same. I did, I think the original proposal went twelve inches to the village hall. My property line goes six inches from the village hall. I did almost three feet. It just, you know, and I'll put a little something over there. I just didn't want any hassle. So I didn't want, I didn't want Corky to have to drill close to their foundation because we both live in really sensitive old pieces of, you know, I mean, we're, we have really old homes. Who knows what could happen? So that's it. Just asking for, um, I'm ready to roll. If you guys can give me an extension, I'll go over and get a permit tomorrow.
So I noticed that the application was identical to the one that you submitted back in twenty twenty. In fact, it's the same. They've got the twenty twenty data.
Did you get permission from the village, Maxine?
Permission for what?
To put it on two feet to their, their land, the village land?
It's not on their property. Oh, no, no, I came, I came off, my property line goes six inches to, from the village hall. I went back three feet rather than the six inches. Yeah, we're, my property line's right. It just butts right up to the village, so.
I got it, yeah.
And, and you're prepared to maintain that three foot space back there?
Yeah, and in fact, I don't know if you walked back there, but that is kind of a rare, very, very wet spot. So the village has allowed that to grow up because they don't have gutters on their building. And their intent is really not to put any gutters on. Maybe with the new zoning codes, it will be required, but right now, water just comes off that building so fast and collects.
So you're gonna maintain it, right?
That's correct.
Right.
I just wanted to say, I don't know what the black thing is. I think what I did is I used pictometry from work. I work at the district and I, I sent an email to Kevin thinking he was just gonna like forward it on, but he printed it. So it's just pictometry that actually gives the dimensions. So.
I have no questions or concerns.
Now we approved it once. Now, but last time it was a question of the six inches.
Okay. I will move that we reapproved as it was approved the last time, which was noted in the notes, medics that I also sent everybody.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
You made the motion.
Oh, okay.
Second.
Okay, I'll give you two seconds. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, Maxine, go over.
I win. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to one more motion.
Oh, that's your?
Yes.
And make the motion to a chair.
Second.
Our next meeting is August first. See everybody. Please, please.